I have one dollar.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 19th, 2023 work session of the Methacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of executive session, the board met an executive session virtually on August 29th, 2023, for the purpose of consulting the solicitor and special counsel on right-to-know matters regarding information and strategy in connection with potential litigation involving previously filed right-to-know requests and the district's response to those requests. By way of attendance, all board members are present this evening. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of presentations and again, next week as well. But first, I want to say good evening, and I'd like to thank all of our school board directors for volunteering their talents, time, and energy to help make the Methacton School District community outstanding. The school board service has long been a crucial part of our long local legacy and our commitment to public education. It is that commitment that each of these school directors sitting here this evening have made time and time again. However, before us this evening, there are two school board directors that may have made a commitment far beyond the others, a commitment that the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, the School Boards Association for School Board Directors here in the Commonwealth so proudly recognize, and one that comes with a distinction, that these two directors being named to the PSBA honor roll. These two directors are Ms. Andrea Reese and Mr. Paul Winters. Both have been named to the PSBA honor roll, having served eight years on the Methacton School Board. PSBA therefore recognizes Andrea Reese and Paul Winters for their eight years of service with this honor roll certificate. If Ms. Reese and Mr. Winters would please join me up front, Madam President. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Sorgini to just give us a brief status update on the facilities master plan. Dr. Sorgini?
Good evening, and thank you. This month, the property committee meeting included a presentation by architectural firm KCBA with a proposed update to the Methacton School District Master Plan. The plan was last updated in 2016. Included on this slide are projects proposed in our district buildings for the next 10 years. The identified projects are based on the district prioritization of the asset inventory collected by Bureau Veritas. This generally includes roofing, chiller, HVAC, milling and paving, and infrastructure work. The initial breakdown of the anticipated work at Methacton High School, unlike the other projects on the chart, is broken down by renovation zone. There is additional review of the high school needed in order to bring forward a complete high school recommendation that we hope to have in the near future. This slide is an example of the individual-- next slide, please. This slide is an example of the individualized budget sheets that need to be created for the identified projects. The budget sheets will show estimated costs for the components of the project, as well as escalation costs, which are the provisions and the cost estimates for increases in the cost of labor, equipment, and material due to continuing price changes over time. Additionally, on the budget sheets, design contingencies set aside a portion of the budget, so the architect can manage costs while exploring options, while soft costs are included to reflect other costs not associated with the physical construction. These can include architectural and owner's rep costs, permitting costs, and any costs necessary to continue educating our students while these projects are taking place, either on the same campus or perhaps even within the same building that our students and staff are occupying. We are asking the board to move forward to the professional design phase for the 2024 roof replacement on the Arcola Skyview Campus and the chiller replacement at Worcester. The 2024 chiller project at Worcester would precede an anticipated larger project in 2025 for Worcester, both to replace the roof and also build a secure vestibule in a similar manner as was done at Eagleville. The 2024 projects were also reviewed at the finance committee as well as the property committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. And for members of the board, there are some agenda items later on in tonight's agenda that will go and speak directly to those particular summer projects for 2024. Please know that the property committee will review the updates from the professionals as to the plan, and we'll be back probably in October, maybe November, with what we believe to hopefully be a finalized plan. But in the interim, we are working, and we respect your review of the proposed 24--summer 2024 projects as we get further on in the agenda this evening. With that, I move on to the next item on under guest and scheduled speakers, the High Schools Campus Planning Committee update. Since 2016, facilities assessment report and the subsequent development of the district facilities master's plan, the Methacton School District has been annually addressing matters identified within that plan. In October of 2022, a presentation to consider the renovation of HVAC at Methacton High School, the board paused on proceeding forward with the given escalation and potential disruption within the given project scope. This pause was followed by discussions on the need to take a deeper look at the overall challenges associated with the high school and its campus, and the additional structures on that campus, and to organize that into a more comprehensive campus plan. To this end, before we continue on a roadmap similar to that from 2016 and make investments into the high school, we need to take in consideration the educational, operational, and economic perspectives, our decision-making process, to avoid potential sunken costs, limiting our future potential options. This is why we have organized the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. As such, I am pleased to update the board on the progress of the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee. Registration for participation on the committee closed last week, and here are some of the numbers. We have a total, as of today, a total of 149 members, 105 from Lower Providence, 44 from Worcester, 23 community members, 25 high school students, 59 parents, 42 staff, and then we also have three trips that are scheduled. We have a trip to a renovated high school, which would be in Potts Grove, and there's 39 people scheduled for that trip. Then we have a new high school construction trip to Upper Marion, that's 71 people, and then also a new high school construction to Avon Grove with 31 people. Again, our first meeting is October 5th. We have then our large meeting for Saturday, October 14th, and then obviously, our last meeting, hopefully to wrap things up, and November, a second meeting. So with that said, I want to thank you for your support. I want to thank the community for their interest in participating, and certainly look forward to some recommendations for the board to consider in the near future. With that, that ends the guest and scheduled speakers for this evening. We would go into the reports. I will give an update on the Audubon Elementary School next week, and then we would move into public comment on board action items. Since there are no action items for this evening, we will, as we annually do, appoint student board representatives next week, and we will move on to approving the board meeting minutes from the previous month, and then we'll move on to fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This month, for your approval, is the list of bills, the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers. As mentioned by Dr. Sorgini, there's the 2024 master plan projects. We have Eagleville and Woodland Playgrounds at $200,000 each, the Arcola Roofing at $2.1 million, the Arcola Tennis Courts at $100,000, the Worcester Chiller at $420,000.
Let me just interrupt for a second. I just want to make sure that the board knows that those are estimated costs, internal estimated costs, not necessarily bids or any other reflect actual prices of any of the matters.
Totalling an estimated $300,000. And then we also have the substitute teacher rates to approve increases in the substitute pay rates within the substitute teacher service contract as follows. First-tier daily rates, 1 to 20 days increase $10 to $150. Second-tier daily rates, 21-plus days increase $25 to $175. Building substitute daily rate, $35 to $200, and a long-term sub-daily rate, $50.46 to $300. This would be effective to 2023, 2024 school year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bricker on items of fiscal? Ms. Perdue?
So I just wanted to go back, just because after Dr. Sorgini's update, I had a question. Can you just clarify for Worcester, the chiller replacement project is captured as 2025, and on the spreadsheet, and why we have it on here for, as part of the--so we are replacing the chillers, and then we also have a new addition?
Potentially a new addition. We will have the secure vestibule project, and when you look at the Worcester project, the chiller replacement project actually spans 24 and 25, because the bulk of the work will actually take place during the winter months, so it will begin probably in late '24 and continue into December, January of '25, when the chiller is not being utilized.
So is the amount on here for--the amount listed on here, is that including the new chiller also, or is that--
That amount does include the new chiller, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Bricker, or anyone else on the fiscal items listed? Yes.
Just regarding the substitute teacher rates, I know we try to stay ahead of that, and so can you just tell me what other districts are looking like with their rates, and I guess also what our fill rates have been so far this year?
Dr. Sorgini?
I can speak to that, yes. We do an analysis every year of local districts, especially those that utilize STS, the same service that we do. We saw a marked increase in a very close neighboring district that had significant increases, as well as some other increases in other neighboring districts, both those that use STS and those that do not, including one that does their own substitute. So based on that analysis, and wanting to remain competitive in the marketplace, we did recommend these changes. Also, although we've made changes on some of the substitute teacher rates, we have not amended the long-term rate in multiple years, and that rate is generally the one that makes us most competitive, both to secure qualified, properly certified substitutes, as well as also create a pipeline to our hiring process.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Dr. Sorgini came to the finance committee meeting this month, and he presented the presentation that's actually posted for the public on the agenda for everyone to see.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. That's there. And our fill rates this year so far have been pretty good?
They've been reasonably good, but again, continuing to look to be competitive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on fiscal matters? Yes, Ms. Perdue?
I just had a quick one. I think I asked this at the finance committee. Do you happen to have the analysis of increase in reference to other districts for substitute teachers?
The one especially that we compare ourselves to increase by $25 in this year, both in the first and second tier, $25 again in the building substitute rate, and they had not had a long-term rate that was commensurate with ours, and they created one that bested ours.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions on fiscal matters, then we will move on to personnel items. Dr. Sorgini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For the board's consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. One resignation, classified, Jeanette Carr, part-time office assistant at the high school. We thank Jeanette for her nearly eight years of dedicated service to Methacton School District, and we wish her well. One job description, confidential, human resources specialist. In an effort to ensure the greatest degree of flexibility in assigning duties and to provide cross-training within the HR department, the attached newly-updated job description for HR specialist is proposed for adoption. The new job description includes augmented duties that best establish the functioning of the department to meet the current and future anticipated needs associated with all aspects of personnel. Item 11--under item 11J, change of status classified. It is further recommended to change the status of Mrs. Dana Wilson from secretary to the director of HR to human resources specialist. As noted in item 11Q, elimination of positions classified. The position of secretary to the director of HR is also proposed for elimination. With administration reconfigurations, there is no longer a director of HR, so needs of the district will be addressed through the updated human resources job description. We have two employment's professional, Heather Sepulveda, special education instructor of the high school, and Gregory Jascot, art instructor at the high school. We welcome Heather to the Methacton family, and we welcome Greg, a Methacton alum, back home to Methacton, and we look forward to the learning that they will provide to our students. We have one employment classified, Karen Maycourt, bus aide. Karen has actually been a bus driver for many years, and we appreciate her taking on this new role. We have one change of status administrative, Dr. Jamie Gravenese, from principal of Methacton High School to director of pupil services. Dr. Gravenese brings her great breadth of experience as a Methacton teacher, assistant principal, supervisor of special education, and principal to this new leadership role. In her previous and current professional roles in Methacton, Dr. Gravenese has worked with countless Methacton students and families. We're grateful to Dr. Gravenese for her interest in moving into this district-wide leadership role, and her colleagues look forward to working with her to support our students, families, teachers, counselors, nurses, psychologists, supervisors, and staff. We have three changes of status classified, Danielle Venezia from monitoring assistant at Arcola to paraprofessional at Skyview. As mentioned, Dana Wilson from secretary to the director of HR to human resources specialist, and Jill Margiotti from monitoring assistant at Arcola to part-time attendance secretary at the high school. We thank Danielle, Dana, and Jill for moving into these new roles, supporting our students and staff. We have one change in compensation, confidential, Amy Peterman, based on the proposed HR specialist job description. One uncompensated leave classified, Tiffany Stott, bus aide, as identified. Supplemental contracts for chaperoning, curriculum instruction and assessment, and pupil service department work, bus duty, activity sponsors, summer registration and preparation and grading work, and the addition of four women instructors to our community education program, Brock Yoder, Jacob Roberts, Emerson Brown, and Jake Kalal. We thank Brock, Jacob, Emerson, and Jake for taking on these important roles. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Any questions on HR matters to my right? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, just a comment. I commend you making the change for the HR specialist, because I think it's one of the most underrated positions, waking up at 5:00 in the morning and finding all the substitutes and fulfilling all the roles. So being able to have redundancy there, even one redundancy, is--seemed like a smart decision.
Any other questions on HR to my right? Seeing none to my left, Ms. Reese?
Just two, sort of. 11B, the resignation of Ms. Carr. I heard you say thanking her for her service, and I would assume 11J3 is her replacement?
That's correct.
And has there ever been a reevaluation of kind of that front office staff? And I asked that because I didn't--I believe there's some talk that it's--three hours is not enough to get the job done, so I didn't know if this was the time to reevaluate that.
We have had those conversations. There was also a question that went around through the HR directors group back in the spring, and we are similarly situated to like districts in terms of number of students and staff.
And I will let you guys decide that between now and then. I--it was brought to my attention, because I believe that there's some talk that it's not enough time to do the job, and I believe the person's going to work for the district I work for, which the hours are a little different. So it might be something that we want to consider, that front office job may need a little bit of reevaluation.
Any other questions? Ms. Austin?
Thank you. I just had a question about the supplemental contracts, the first one, the $3,100 for homecoming chaperones. Is that for all the homecoming activities, the game and the alum activities and the dance and everything, or is that--
It's primarily intended for the dance.
Okay, mostly for the dance. Okay, thank you.
But we will have staff and security at both events.
Okay, thank you.
This was generally our wave of moving the dance to a Saturday. That's rather than doing it on a Thursday or Friday. Everyone shaking their head, they understand the challenge. Okay. I'm sorry, any other questions on HR? Seeing none, thank you very much. Dr. Sorgini. Next, we have curriculum and programs. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For matters of revised curriculum this evening, we are looking to approve the following revised curriculum for the 23-24 school year. That's in Algebra II, Trigonometry Honors, Honors Pre-Calculus, and AP Statistics. During the 22-23 school year, AP Statistics, Algebra II, Trigonometry, and Honors Pre-Calc were reviewed by teachers for their course and the resources to provide support to teaching and learning. To better support the students and staff, they selected new textbooks and more digital resources that stronger align to the PA Core Common Standards.
And these matters were reviewed at this month's education committee meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Are there any questions from members of the board to my right on any of the curriculum matters? To my left, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Regina. On the policy, please.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For policy this evening, items under first read, being we will have no items for second read until October. Policies that consider some dialogue, 249 is the bullying, cyberbullying policy, which is required three-year review by PDE standards. 307 had some revisions to it, specific to classroom observers. We are going to require them to have the same clearances as student teachers and interns, which is also the same as position volunteers. And 309, there was some language removed that will not supersede any language in collective bargaining agreements. So again, no articles defined by our CBAs with respective vacancies and transfers will be changed due to the language removal in this policy. Thank you.
Are there any questions on matters of policy to members of my left? Seeing none to anyone right? Thank you. Another other is listed under 14A, the superintendent's goals for the 23-24 school year, as attached. We have gifts and donations approved, the backpack program donations received from the generous individuals noted on the attached document, an amount of $390.23. No trips. And then for transportation, approve the following first student drivers as part of the transportation employee roster for the 23-24 school year, and Andre Davis. And then we move on to dates for school board calendars. I'll turn the meeting back over to Ms. Austin.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Yes, we have the dates for board members' calendars, and then we're on to, does any board member have anything for old or new business? Ms. Reese?
Real quick, a couple things. I just wanted to make note that that October 10th property meeting is a Tuesday because of, I assume, Columbus Day. So I just wanted to make note of that, because many of us are so habit-driven that we will show up on Monday, because they're always on Monday. So I just wanted to say that. And then, if nobody minds, I apologize. I will not be here next week, so I wanted to give a very quick MCIU update, if nobody minded. We met on August 23rd, and we'll be meeting again next Wednesday after our meeting. So, and I just wanted to quickly say that Patton gave a presentation, and if anybody is in the--is a parent in the--with--in the special education realm or a staff member, it's really worth looking at their website and subscribing to their bulletins. They have phenomenal, phenomenal resources. So I'm speaking to anybody in that realm, I always like to remind people of that when Patton speaks at our MCIU meetings. And I know Dr. Zerbi sent us an email, but in case you didn't see it, Tina Valetto has--is no longer with the IU, and she has relocated, and it was kind of a quick, very quick, and she was such an asset to many school boards in Montgomery County, helping school boards and helping understand all the legislation. So I did want to acknowledge her. And finally, and I will bring it up in October, but November 10th is the Monte Carlo evening for the MCIU Foundation-- for the MCIU Foundation, and it is a really, really awesome event, and it helps raise money. One of their main goals is to raise money to send children to summer camp that can't always go. And I attended for the first time last year, and it was, it was really a worthwhile cause, and it's kind of small. So if anyone wants to join me as my, one of my last hurrah's. And finally, I did want to acknowledge this certificate. I know Mr. Winters and I were a little embarrassed to get up there and receive a certificate for a volunteer job that we want, you know, wanted to do, but I did want to acknowledge that it has been such a pleasure to work with Mr. Winters for eight years. He truly is just an incredible member of our community, and he would never, ever shout his name out, but he has done so much for everybody. And he jokes that he is Miss, Gabby Winters' husband, but he is certainly Mr. Winters in his own right, and he has done a lot for this district. And finally, I apologize to those members of the public who are speaking at courtesy of the floor. I have a personal conflict for my child, and I am going to scoot out, but I promise to watch the video and hear your comments, and I will see you all next month. So I, excuse me, and I apologize.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else for old or new business this evening? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I just, it dawned on me, I actually meant to send this to Dave earlier, but this Saturday, Simon's Heart, which is the same group that we had for the heart screening a few years ago here in the high school, I believe that was 2019, I'm not positive, but they are actually having one from nine to two o'clock on the 23rd here in Norristown at Roosevelt Campus on Barkley Street. So any parent that want to get their child checked for the possibility of some hidden heart defect, I imagine there are online appointments that you can probably ask for. It is under Simon's Fund, but I believe Norristown is hosting. But it's possible, Dr. Zerby, maybe Mr. Schmank or Dr. Gravenese or could put some, some type of community outreach. I don't know if there's openings, maybe we should check that first, but having the opportunity to, to do this, and I know it was successful with some students here at Methacton just a few years ago.
No, well said. We'll do, we'll do both things. We're going to actually, we'll check on that, see if there's openings, communicate out, and then also follow up with them to find out when we are able to get back on their cycle, because they weren't, they weren't willing to do it like every year and type of thing. So I can't, and I can't remember this evening what the cycle was, but I'll get that information back.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, old or new business? Okay, it's time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and the board of school directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Anyone for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Who passes it out?
Just for the board members. One for Dr. Gravenese.
No, they should get it now.
Good luck, Jeff. Your policy.
Board members, you should have that now. I need to address some things on it.
We will pass out to the board members. You're welcome to speak on whatever matter that you believe will come before the board.
They need to see that. My elected officials need to see that.
They will see it. We will pass it out to them.
No, they need to see it now as I speak. They need to see it.
They could vote on the issue.
Yeah, no, wait a second. This is new to me. They get, somebody comes out, gets it, and passes it out to nine board members and their superintendent. And I'm going to address some issues on it.
People have to vote.
I need to speak to that. It's important. Yeah, you have to. They're my elected officials. They should want it. I didn't know that changed.
Oh, yeah.
Phew. My wife doesn't know I'm here. She thinks I'm at Wawa or at the mall.
Can you please speak your name and municipality, please?
Joe Bickelman, Audubon, the only area without a school. My wife thinks I'm at the mall riding around. She's very concerned about my physical, or more importantly, while I'm here, my mental health. I couldn't understand why First Student back in February got a contract, a five-year extension, 8%, 8%, 4%. Didn't understand it. You take 8% of $7 million, that's $560,000 increase. I couldn't figure out where that money was going at all. Price of gas is steady, isn't shooting through the roof, nothing like that. Bricker gave a presentation. He didn't say what First Student, why First Student needed an 8% raise. There was no justification from First Student to you people why he needed an 8% raise. He just told you, look out, 24-25 might be a 25% raise if we don't do this five-year deal. You didn't get a reason. Some people from the public addressed this issue, they didn't know why, and there were two clever people on the board that asked the question that almost got an answer. There was no reason for these increases to First Student for 8%, 8%, 4%. Plus, you always talk, Mr. Bricker said, it didn't go out for proposals. This was no proposals were obtained from other companies because we wanted the continuity, because this is the best, it's run six years. Ask Dr. Zerby why it didn't run good for six years. He can talk to you about Mr. Shock, he can talk to you about the IU helping out, he can talk to you about scrapping all the runs that were tweaked in 2014 that they scrapped them all. Take a look at table two. Here's your reason for 8%. Down in table two, you'll see in the last column, $22 an hour in year four. Person coming this year to work for First Student, that person coming back to work will make $33.70, an $11.70 raise, 53%. Somebody making $23 last year is going to make $33.70, a $10 an hour increase. The person making $24 last year is going to make $33.70, a $9.70 increase, a 40% raise. Okay? That person making $22 last year at 1,000 hours was making $22,000. They're going to make $33,700 this year to drive a school bus. Okay? Now you know why First Student needed the money. The corporate world would not approve increases like this unless they had the money in their pockets first before negotiation. My wife got a $1.91 increase, 6%. You went from six years to the top to three years to the top? Well, three years to the top gets you my wife's rate and the Methacton driver's rate, not the people reflected in table two. Okay? That's why First Student needed 8, 8 for going out.
Thank you for your comment.
And get some quotes, do the work, get that savings into the classroom.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. A couple items. One is on the substitute teacher rates. Earlier, Mr. Sorgini said that the increases are to reflect Methacton's desire to be competitive. And I was at the committee meeting where apparently the highest of the local school districts on the long-term substitute daily rates was about $250 a day. And it doesn't make sense to me why Methacton is offering $300 a day. I think that needs to be explored by the board. I agree that the, the rate is deserving of increase for Methacton, but I question going from $250 currently to $300, a 20% increase, that, I think that's beyond competitive. So thus, it's worthy of further discussion. Then another item on the agenda for vote next week is the superintendent's goals. It makes reference to a CCIU communications review, and I ask if that, is that going to be available to the board, and is that going to be available to the public? And lastly, your board president, a few months ago, went by the name of Elizabeth Drummond. Now apparently it's Elizabeth Alston. And I'm wondering if that reflect, is, is there any residency changes out of the district associated with that, and whether there need to be, needs to be formal notice to PDE of the name change? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Very smart move, Dave, letting them all see that handout. Pretty smart. Jason should not be in charge of the $232 million debacle. You should be. Don't give it to him. You keep it, and I want to see what's going to happen when you go ahead and try to implement it. Don't put him in harm's way with your ridiculous plan. Went through my 10,000 pages of foundation emails. I got some talking points for the foundation for you. Here's a couple. Number one, never enough money for public education. You guys have that all in common. You don't have enough money, 232, that's 300 million, you know? And then number two, the foundation is an independent entity separate from the district. After everything I saw, I would characterize the relationship as incestuous. And I'll give you some examples. According to Minutes in 2020 for the foundation, Dr. Zerby would like to transfer approximately 75,000 from the building activity accounts from the various schools to the foundation to avoid having the money placed in the district's operating budget. That's you, Dave. Control of the funds would be retained by the district. Funds go to the foundation, but controlled by you. And one of the foundation members recommended approving it since they didn't want to see the money moving into the general fund. I don't have any evidence that this was discussed at a public meeting, minutes, video. Foundation knows all about it. So same thing happened with the transfer of $109,000 of scholarship funds to the foundation to avoid having the money placed in the district's general operating budget. Why weren't we told about this stuff? I mean, I found out about it through a right-to-know request. So I'll sum it up for you after reading it. This is my impression of what's going on, right? So the district gives this money to the foundation to avoid having it go to the general fund, right? Then the foundation give this money back to the district. It doesn't go there and go somewhere else. It goes from district to foundation, but then they give it back to you. There's, I think there's a term for that. I can't, I'm not an accountant, but I think there's a term for what that is. We should have been notified that this stuff is happening. And as a matter of fact, there's emails that show that people weren't happy about it and want to go back to the way it was. So I would give us an explanation.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening? All right. Seeing none, any comments from board members or Dr. Zerby?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few if I could. So it is true that the Teamsters, I believe, earlier this week, settled a four-year agreement with the drivers. Mr. Bricker, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're happy that the Methacton, or the First Student drivers, that drive for Methacton, their contract was approved and for four years. And so those individuals that get up every morning at, at five o'clock and maybe sometimes earlier, you know, are being paid appropriately. Now, it is no secret that Mr. Bricker laid out a number of reasons why we made the recommendations that we did. And one of the major recommendations was to make sure that we were able to attract drivers and retain drivers for the operation of this school district. There's no question that driving shortages are across the Commonwealth across the nation, and we wanted to put ourselves in the best position possible. But we, in no way, our contract negotiation with First Student in no way said exactly what the rates people would get. We did make recommendations on what those rates should be, especially in terms of trying to attract new drivers and, and, and a trajectory of their, their onboarding through the rate structure. So we were involved in that as part of our agreement with them, but we did not settle that particular matter, and these rates are associated with what was negotiated between Teamsters and, and the, and the local labor. And we're happy, as I understand, the, the drivers are happy about the particular settlement of the contract. We had a bus driver appreciation day just this week. Was that Monday? It was Monday? So Monday we had that. We shared some coffee, donuts, and laughter with many of the bus drivers that were able to meet with us. So there's, there's no secret that, you know, under Mr. Bricker's leadership, we've made some improvements. There's no secret that all the recommendations and the transparency of those recommendations to the board were proper and just to get us into best position to provide transportation services for the district. In terms of comments about the foundation, you know, we've been subjected to a number of comments about the, the foundation over the last several months, you know, creating some type of hysteria around possibly wrongdoing. It just seems like there's always something, you know, brewing up with respects to something going wrong. Well, when, when, when our auditors say to us that you can't have certain activity accounts for certain groups of students, specifically at an elementary level or middle level, these are typically handled by high school student activity clubs. It was, it was determined that by our auditors that we have one of two choices. We either go and have those, you know, spend those, those dollars, or we find another 501(c)(3) that could, that could hold the money and then allow students and the principals to make purchases for the betterment of the student body that those, those monies were originally intended for. Those were, those were monies that were raised by students. It was not taxpayer dollars. And you should know that there was, every, every step of the way was reviewed by our auditors and approved by our auditors, and we wouldn't do anything differently. So I just want to make sure that everyone's apprised of that.
Any other final comments from board members?
I just want to say that my name change did not affect my residency and has been properly processed through the district.
That is, that is correct.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis, a second. Ms. Cleary, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.